Okay, I think. No, we're still missing one person. It's not here. This is. This is great. And with all members present and right here, I'm going to call the Port of Selectment meeting on April 21st at 9:01 a.m. to order. The meeting is being recorded. And I'm not sure whether Gail's taking notes today or.
Sharon's.
Sharon's, okay. Sharon is here too. Great. So we'll call the meeting to order. I have no chairman's report. I do have a brief explanation that we're meeting at this unusual time because of scheduling issues that were related to problems with the posting for our Tuesday meeting. And we wanted to make sure that this meeting and all the deliberations and discussions and decisions that are made would be would be a properly posted meeting. So with that in mind, we're going to start right in with some DPW updates. The first on the order of our agenda is cemetery expansion. And Greg, do you want to start us out with that?
Sure. So
Why do you want me to do that?
Yeah, I'll quickly turn it over to Chuck, but the the short version is that there's a a small area, Pleasant Grove, little triangular piece of land that can be cleared and and house host about 71 new graves. And so the DPW has met with the neighbors and I think I think they have become satisfied with the plans. And with that, I'll let Chuck go over a few more details and have seek your approval to move forward with that.
Sure. I mean, real quick, you know, we did meet with the butter after the last meeting. Eli actually was also able to attend that meeting. So I'm, you know, I think everybody was satisfied. Obviously, you know, there's some tree removal that will have to take place. We'll have to remove some, you know, stones and larger materials that are there, also the stumps and things of that nature. And then we will, you know, bring in new material to level out the area. There's still a, you know, a grade elevation difference that we have to make up between the existing plots and the kind of back of the property line, but confident that we can make that work. There's also drainage infrastructure in the driveway, you know, that comes off of Pleasant Street. So you know, if we need to put in a perimeter drain, or we likely will put in a perimeter drain just to make sure. And then so we will try and do all that work as soon as we can. Weather and time permitting this spring and then in the fall, we'll be able to, you know, do some more plantings that will stream kind of the current DPW yard from, you know, the cemetery expansion area. And I think the row of trees will kind of come down the back property line to the direct to butter. You know, right now they're pretty much evergreens with, you know, all of that kind of stuff. So I think it'll it'll be nice to, you know, it'll look very natural once we're done. A little bit of, you know, work in progress as we get it done, but it'll be a good thing. So with that, any other questions? I'm happy to talk about it.
Does the board have any questions?
No, I'll just say this does not include the the kind of area that was also shaded for potentials cremation area on the driveway itself. No, that's just not part of what we're looking at right now.
Just a comment. I did talk to George Smith about the trees that they're thinking about, or they would be thinking about putting in there. And they said that they would work with the butters to get tree preferences or opinions about the the trees that are going to be put in there.
Thank you, Rila. I just had one question, Chuck. Is this something that's budgeted in this year's budget or next year's budget?
So, you know, we have a, you know, a fairly sizable tree budget that was recently expanded in, you know, the current year.
I'm talking, I'm talking about the actual work for the creating this cemetery space.
There, there is no budget line per se. We have, you know, construction material budget that I'll use for the granular materials. It's going to be DPW, you know, forces and equipment that, you know, do most of the work. So, you know, besides the tree removal, obviously, we'll use a contractor for that. And then we'll have to sub out or, you know, work with friends of trees on donations for the new plantings. But other than that, I, you know, the money's there currently.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll carry over into next year's budget if we need to.
Okay. Becky.
Good morning. I just, is there, are you going to need to do any ledge work? Do you anticipate that there?
I don't anticipate, like I said, there's, there's more of a fill than anything to kind of get the area to level off. And, you know, when we do the stump removal, we'll see, but I don't anticipate any. You know, there are some boulders and stuff, but, you know, it has been kind of a, you know, area where brush and stuff will be, you know, put, you know, over the years. So that, you know, it's kind of a fill area already. So I don't anticipate, you know, going deep enough to hit ledge. But we'll, we'll be looking on for it.
And so the concerns of flooding of the butters, that's, I know you said you can work with some drainage, but those have been taken care of?
Yep. I mean, I believe so. You know, that, you know, I said that they'd be the first one to tell me if we did it wrong. But, you know, we're not going anywhere. We'll take care of it. But I have no problems. I think we'll be fine.
Great. Thank you, Chuck.
John?
Yeah, I just had had a little more information on this drainage issue. Are you expecting you're going to have to put in some sort of a storm drain or sewer in there, which is no larger initiative, or are you just anticipating you think you're okay with what you've got?
No. So what I'm saying is, you know, it does slope down to the back property line. And so what we'll probably end up doing is more of like a French drain structure, like, you know, corrugated plastic that will, you know, we'll just set basically on the existing grade now and then we'll bury it. So if there is, you know, it'll promote drainage to that area, but it'll take it back in existing already is the storm drain in the driveway. So basically the infrastructure is already there. We just have to connect to it if if needed. So it won't be a big deal.
All right. So there is a, that was really kind of the key of my question. There is a storm drain that runs up the driveway there. You're not going to have to connect into Pleasant Street, which is a run.
Yeah, no, it's everything's already existing.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Anne.
Chuck, do you have a rough estimate of what this whole thing is going to cost?
So we did actually have a, you know, tree removal estimate. I, I want to say it was around $7,000 for the tree removal, maybe a little bit more than that. I forget. It's so it's old. We'll have to get it updated. So, you know, that's an expense that can be handled within the existing tree budget. You know, the materials for bringing in the film material, you know, that's going to be another couple thousand as well. You know, so it probably somewhere in the 15 to $20,000 range, you know, assuming that the tree plantings are, you know, either donated or, you know, there's also cemetery funds that we can use if we need to. We do have a waitlist for selling the plots. So, you know, I, I kind of think it'll be a wash. If, if not, you know, more.
Thank you very much.
If there are no further questions, then I would say in a motion to approve the expansion of Pleasant Grove Cemetery for 71 new grave sites as outlined in the documents that we've seen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Eli and seconded by Becky. Roll call vote. Anne.
Yes.
Becky.
Yes.
Eli.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
I'm sure votes yes. Thank you, Chuck.
No problem.
For all the work that you've put into this so far and all the work that you will put into it in the future.
The hard part's coming.
Okay, so let's move on to my favorite topic of PFAS.
Yeah. So I don't know if you've had a chance to go through the entire report, but, you know, last year, you know, 2021, we were doing exploratory sampling on the well for PFAS contamination or presence of PFAS, I should say. We did find it in the fall of 21. We were required by DP as were every other water supplier in the state to go to, you know, regular testing. In our case, because the well is over 10 parts per trillion, we will be, or we are sampling monthly. Gravely Pond was came back below 10, so we only have to sample that quarterly. The, the evaluation that we did was only for the well, because that's, you know, where we have the presence. I will say, as we've been going through the monthly testing, we've seen the numbers fluctuate between, you know, 10 and 20 parts per trillion. The, the MCL that DP has said is 20 parts per trillion. We were right up against it. You know, as high as 19 and some, you know, and some change. And so at that point, we decided to do split sampling where there's only three mass certified labs in the state that are testing for PFAS because it's such a new compound to be treat or tested regularly. So we were using one lab. But because it's so new and because there's, you know, we're talking parts per trillion. It's really, you know, one of those things where, you know, especially once we started talking about adding potential treatment that we wanted to really know what our numbers were. And so we've been doing split sampling, which literally means taking our sample, basically doubling it, but sending it to two labs. So literally the same draw off the, you know, point of entry into the distribution system. And, you know, sending that to two separate labs, which, you know, costs us a couple hundred dollars each sample, but, you know, was a good data point for us. And also it's shown that, you know, because it's so new and because the labs are, you know, really coming up to speed on, you know, dialing in their testing, we've actually seen that. And the, the numbers are so small that our testing has actually come back at, you know, there is a difference, a noticeable difference. So there's about a spread of six part per trillion between the two labs. So if the first lab we're using is coming in to 19 to 20 parts per trillion. You know, we've seen the, the other, the new lab is coming in, you know, like 14 parts per trillion. So, you know, there's a, there's a noticeable spread there. And so what that means is when we report our report, reporting to DP, we take the average. So, you know, if, if one comes in at 20 and one comes in at 14, we, we show an average of 17. Obviously, they get all the data, but this is just for, you know, kind of where we are relative to the MCL. So that's, that's what we've been doing on the sampling side and how that's worked. Because, you know, there, if we do go over the 20 parts per trillion, you know, we will be required to add treatment or to abandon the source, basically. Which in our case would be very hard to fathom at the, at the well. It's about 40% of our water supply on an annual basis. So, you know, it is potential that we'll have to go to treatment. So this evaluation was really to take a closer look at, you know, treatment alternatives, as well as, you know, where, where we are relative to the MCL with different, you know, the different compounds. I should have mentioned, we were testing for six PFAS compounds. The total of all six has to be 20 or less. So that's, that's what's part of the MCL right now. There are many, you know, hundreds of chains of PFAS that are out there, but we're only really required to test for the six right now. So, you know, our testing does show, you know, additional unregulated PFAS. So, you know, in the event that those additional PFAS were, you know, part of our reporting requirements and the MCL, then, you know, it's likely that we would be over that, whatever that MCL was or potential. So the, the long and the short of it is that, you know, we, we have this evaluation now. You know, we, we, we are very confident that we can treat at the well for, you know, the PFAS compounds that we have and that, you know, we would be likely to be in the non-detect range after treatment. So, you know, that it's, you know, it costs money, but, you know, it can be treated. And, you know, it'll require a new building. It'll require doing iron and manganese treatment, because that will basically allow the media that we're using for the PFAS compounds to, you know, last longer and be more cost beneficial. So, you know, that's some of the highlights. The, the price tag is not insignificant. It's, you know, in the planning level analysis, you know, we're talking eight to $9 million capital investment to basically add this additional treatment and the additional building. So, you know, that's certainly, you know, will require more scrutiny and, you know, full design process. In the short term, if we wanted to, you know, we could start a piloting program where we would, you know, take our specific water chemistry. And we could, you know, try some of the different media that are available and see which one works the best. We could also pilot the iron and manganese treatment to see, you know, make sure that that, you know, works the way it should. You know, those, those kind of piloting bench scale studies, you know, are in the order of six figures. So, you know, easily $100,000 to do a, you know, to do a big in-depth one. But, you know, that's ahead of, you know, potentially an eight or $9 million project. So it's, you know, money well spent at that point. I think that's all I really have to say. I can certainly go into much greater detail on any aspects that people are interested in though.
Becky.
I why are some of the PFAS monitored and some not? Do you know how they come up with that determination?
I don't know exactly what the state was considering when they picked those six. I mean, those are the most, I guess, prevalent six that, you know, have been kind of looked at at a, you know, nationwide level. I think the the six, so there, you know, there's long chain and short chain. These six are the short chain, which I think have a more likely to be, you know, I think they're most likely to be found, but also they're the most, the hardest to treat and the you know, potentially the most sensitive to, sensitive the population that would be at, at risk, I guess, would be more sensitive to those six. So, you know,
So more
young, young children, pregnant mothers, nursing mothers, those, you know, those, those populations that they look at when they, you know, come up with these things. You know, more likely to have issues with the, those six. I'm not a toxicologist, so I will stop there, but that's my general understanding.
So with, okay, with that in mind, do we and I, I, I know that, that when you're talking about the parts per trillion that we're talking about, it was like a drop in eight Olympic sized swimming pools, I think it was.
Twenty.
How many?
Twenty.
Twenty, thank you. But, but just because actually it's a very small amount. I don't know how potentially dangerous that is or is not. But do we know specifically what streets and homes are served by the Lincoln Street well, or are, is it all mixed in?
So obviously, the, the point of entry for the well is directly into the distribution system on Lincoln Street. So it's, you know, the any service connections within close proximity to Lincoln Street, you know, are getting the water. I would say just the way our distribution system is set up and looped, you know, obviously the gravelly pond is on one extreme side. It pumps in, you know, with no, you know, very minimal service connections till it gets to the well or it gets to the tank. So it, you know, we're pumping basically all the water from the treatment plant, you know, more or less goes in and out of the well or in and out of the tank and then, you know, supplies the, the town from, you know, kind of that direction. The Lincoln Street well is obviously more centrally located. So it's likely that, you know, water from the well is going into, you know, the, the system, you know, at a more kind of widespread level. Because it's, you know, branches right out goes out to Summer Street and, you know, Eastern Manchester, but also the downtown areas, you know, closer proximity. So it's, it's definitely mixed. However, you know, you could probably say that the well, you know, covers more area, whether or not it's more services, likely, it's likely more services too, just because the kind of neighborhood, you know, area around the well. But, you know, it is definitely mixed. There's no, there's no set line of delineation. And the, the other thing is, you know, the well's off sometimes. And, you know, the, the whole system just goes off the tank. So, you know, it's, it's not an exact science. There's definitely times where the well's running 24/7. There's definitely times where it's offline. So, you know, at that point, everything gets mixed together.
Okay. So I guess where I'm going with this is and, and at, at what point do people whose homes are provided water from this source? Do we need to, to, to really put out notification? All right. If you are pregnant or whatever, you, you, you need to be concerned about this.
Yep. So, I mean, you know, I, I think we're being, you know, pretty open, you know, we're not obviously trying to hide behind anything, but the, you know, the MCL is 20. You know, the, the EPA level, that's just the state level. The EPA level is 70. So, you know, it's, it's certainly not a consensus based thing at this point. But I think, you know, certainly the more proactive states are, you know, all copying that 20 parts per trillion level. Again, it's not, you know, there, there is toxicology reporting behind it, but I don't think that it, you know, it's one of those things where, you know, everybody has an opinion and, you know, there's experts on both sides. So I, I wouldn't want to, you know, put myself too far out there one way or the other, but you know, so it's 20 MCL and we're all working with that as our kind of benchmark and we're below 20 MCL. So I think that, you know, in, and, you know, DP is, you know, right on top of this. So if, if we do go over 20 parts per trillion, you know, we will be, you know, doing a lot more public notice and education. But, you know, the, the limit is 20. And so that's what we're working towards. You know, certainly, just as kind of a aside, the, the iron and manganese that we see at the well is above the secondary limit. And this, you know, if we were to, you know, add treatment, we would also get the additional benefit of treating for the iron and manganese. So, you know, that would be a, you know, a improvement in water quality as well that, you know, you know, outside of the PFAS issue. So, you know, there, there's lots of, lots of things going on, I guess, right now.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Nate, also. And, and I hope it didn't seem that I was implying that, that you all were doing anything but being straight up and in front with this. I, I, I know that, that you are. And I appreciate the work you do. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly top of mind now. I, I will just add, so kind of a, another issue, another thing to keep in mind is, so, you know, while, you know, 100% of, you know, one service or another might get just, you know, water from the well, the, the mixing that, you know, inevitably takes place at all the peripheries of that kind of area with the, with the gravelly pond offset or, you know, the, the mass balance is different. So, you know, we are testing under 10 at gravelly pond. And so, you know, theoretically, we would take some sort of average of the well water and the gravelly pond water. And that would be, you know, what somebody's getting at their tap. And so there's lots of other systems. Ours isn't like this, but say, for instance, in Hamilton or even when, um, you know, if they have multiple wells that go, you know, feed the same header line or, you know, there's, there's many different, I just, those are the local ones I know. You know, they might have one well that's coming in at 25 or something, but then the well right next to it is coming in at 10. And they take the average of those. And so, you know, it's, you know, 12 and a half or whatever. And that's what's get, so it's basically your, our reporting requirements are at the point of entry. And so that's why we kind of have these two distinguished numbers, whereas, you know, some systems might just mix them and you, you only take what the mix is. So, so that is, I, I will say we, Nate and I did a little back of the envelope math and, you know, we could just say, you know, we're gonna divert the well water from the distribution system up to the tank and mix it at the tank with the gravelly pond water. And that would bring us below the threshold without adding any treatment at the well. But the problem with that, you know, first of all, it's expensive. It's probably roughly the same amount. And also
I'm sorry, same amount is what?
Capital expense. So the, the capital involved to run a new pipe up to the tank is roughly the same as adding the treatment itself. It's actually, it's probably
Eighteen million?
Yeah, probably, likely. But, but we would be able to say that, you know, we're, we're now taking an average. You know, on a you know, a total basis. So if 40% of the well, you know, you'd have to do the math, 40% of the water at, you know, 20 parts per trillion versus, you know, with 60% of the water at, call it seven parts per trillion, you know, what is that? You know, what is that average point of entry?
Okay, we need to move on. We have several other people with their hands up from the board. And I want to recognize Anne.
Thank you. Um, two questions. One, what size building and could you possibly reuse the existing quirky building that's been abandoned?
So we did look at that, you know, when we were doing our site visit with the consultants and it's unlikely. There, there was, first of all, the, we don't have the room. These vessels are kind of tall. So we, we don't really have the headspace. And also there's the kind of awkward issue of we would have to, you know, basically run a header line from the well. The well is the well, right? We have to start there. And then we would have to basically pump it out of the well into the building that now would be crossing Sawmill Brook. And there and then come back across to basically the, the other building besides the well building that's currently on the side, as you saw, when you were out there is basically the chemical addition. So that chemical addition, you know, the chlorine and fluoride and so on and so forth. That's all, you know, going to be reused and, you know, that's all stays. So we, you know, we wouldn't want to move it or, you know, lose that building, you know, it would be an additional expense.
Is, is there space? So how, how large would that building be and is there space for it?
Uh, yeah. So in the report, there's, there's a, you know, a depiction. It basically, the existing well building would be demolished and we do kind of like an L-shaped building that would encapsulate the existing well building as well as, you know, a much larger building that would run kind of parallel to the existing Kempey building. So like that whole length. We would have to basically, you know, the, the, the equipment that we need is pretty much two vessels that would do iron and manganese treatment, another two vessels that would do PFAS treatment. And then we'd need a backwash water tank that, you know, is roughly 25,000 gallons. So it's, you know, it's like five big pieces of tankage that have to go in the building. And so that's the general footprint is basically the whole length of the two existing buildings and then, you know, that much again, back to the back of the property towards the club.
Thank you. And my second was, do you have any feeling for whether the state is likely to add more PFAS variants and just I have a feeling that we're going to end up treating this no matter what. Is that your feeling?
Yes. Yes. The, I, I think that they're looking to add, uh, if, if they don't add the unregulated molecules, I see them lowering the threshold for the 10, or for the 20. So it would, in essence, do the same thing. Uh, because one, like I said, once you add treatment for the six, you're likely treating the unregulated ones anyway. So the, so, you know, you could do it either way, basically, and accomplish the same thing. Either add the unregulated or just lower the threshold. So I could see them for sure, just saying, we're gonna keep our six. Everybody's comfortable doing that testing. Everybody's comfortable, you know, with the treatment. They're the hardest ones to treat typically, and so let's just cut it to 10 instead of 20. Um, you know, it's kind of arbitrary, but I think that's definitely possible.
Is there a chance that as they do that, we would have to treat the water at gravelly pond? And if so, uh, is there a way we could combine the treatments? Or we just have to have face $8 million here and $8 million there?
Um, so right now, we're under 10 at gravelly. So, you know, I think, you know, knock on wood and, you know.
I'm, I'm worrying about the trends, because this is, this is something that we're going to be facing for decades.
Yeah. Um, so there, there's no way, you know, just the proximity of the well to the plant, it's, it's really hard and cost prohibitive to connect them. Um, so I guess, I, I do see the MCL going down. I don't see the MCL going to zero. Uh, so I don't think we will, you know, it, it's not on my, you know, short to medium term, long range, or short to medium term planning that we would need to treat at gravelly pond. Um, but, you know, nothing's, nothing's written in stone for sure. Um, but, um, so I think, I think we're likely, I can foresee in the short to medium term, treatment at the well, but not gravelly pond, to answer your question.
Thank you very much.
Yes, uh, Chuck, a question. This is, this is a relatively recent requirement. Are there other communities around that uh, have had these, that had problems right off the get-go and have built these treatment, uh, plants? Or is this all kind of new?
No, I mean, so the, the treatment, uh, that's laid out, you know, that would likely be where we go is the granular activated carbon, so GAC. And that's very common, uh, you know, certain waters need that kind of treatment anyway. Um, so the, the treatment itself is, you know, very, you know, common. Uh, in terms of PFAS, yes, that is very new. And, um, you know, there, there are other options besides GAC for, you know, some, some circumstances. Um, so, you know, that's kind of outlined, you know, our two choices are anion exchange and the GAC. Um, they both have been implemented in other places specifically for PFAS treatment. Um, there are certainly people, you know, where you most commonly associate PFAS contamination is with, you know, areas where they've used extensive firefighting foam, so airports and the like, uh, military bases. Um, you know, that stuff is very much, uh, you know, contaminated, you know, source, source water. Um, but now, you know, because they're treating it, or, you know, making the MCL at such a low level, um, you know, people are finding it in everyday areas. So, um, you know, Greg and I were talking yesterday, like, even in areas where, you know, you have just, you don't have these, you know, uh, point sources where, you know, like the Air Force bases or the like, um, you know, even septic issues, uh, could come up because, you know, this stuff is in everything. It's, it's a household product. It's Teflon, it's fleece, it's, you know, dryer sheets. It's all of these things, you know, anything that basically wicks water, um, you know, has PFAS in it. And so when you do your laundry, you know, half of your clothing, it probably has PFAS on it. And not only that, but, you know, your food processing also has it, food packaging has it. Um, so all of these things, if they make it into a landfill, or they make it into, you know, your septic systems, uh, you know, at a, at a large, large scale, um, you know, could impact your well, uh, sources.
Okay, so I guess, I guess, uh, I'm, I'm getting at, so there are other communities that are using this charcoal approach. Um, perhaps not necessarily per PFAS, but they've got it in their system, and it obviously will pull out PFAS as well. And they, they have installed them. So this is, this is a known technology that, that will work for PFAS, among other things. And it's a benchmark, so that the cost here is fairly well established.
Yep. Um, yeah, this is, yeah, we're not, um, on the cutting edge of, uh, technology in terms of water treatment, just the, you know, the application.
Okay, do you, do you happen to know if there are other communities in the area that specifically for PFAS, they've had to put this in?
Oh, yeah. So Nate just put it in the chat, but, you know, AIR is a community that has their system in. I think Littleton is, uh, in the midst of commissioning one. Um, for, I was actually at a meeting in Hamilton the other day, and they're putting in GAC for other issues that weren't related to PFAS, but they will get the additional benefit of PFAS, you know, removal in, from their wells. Um, so, yeah, it's totally, uh, been done around the state locally.
Okay, all right. So, so there's the added advantage that you may be solving other problems that may not yet be anticipated, but charcoal will do the job.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Uh, two questions. Um, one, uh, I'm assuming that we don't anticipate being able to, you know, find any source or ultimately remove the ambient contaminations that we're seeing. And the second question is, um, what is the confidence interval or accuracy of the PFAS testing right now? Is that 20 parts per million plus or minus 1%, 2%, 5%? Uh, do you know?
Uh, so unfortunately, I, I don't know. That's why we went to the other labs, and certainly the, there's a divergence there, you know, to six parts per trillion, which is, you know, uh, roughly 50%, you know, a little bit less than 50%. So they're, they're not close at all, um, but, you know, we, we have to live with it. Um, I'm sorry, what was the first question? The, uh, oh, the finding the sources or remediating the sources? Unfortunately, I, I don't know that, you know, we I, I don't know where the sources are right now. Um, so we have done testing at the landfill. It does, uh, you know, we do have PFAS at the landfill monitoring wells. Um, you know, those are kind of sort of the headwaters of the Sawmill Brook, you know, watershed. Um, so that, you know, I would, you know, it stands to reason that, you know, it could be coming from there. There's also other uses, you know, land uses within the watershed. Um, there's 128, uh, within the watershed. So, you know, at these levels, you know, any of those could be potential sources, and so I don't know that, you know, a whole bunch of additional testing and, um, potential remediation of those will be any less, likely won't be less than just adding treatment at the water, uh, source. You know, the, the drinking water source, I should say.
If I can jump in, can add a little more to that. Uh, this is Nate. Um, so one of the, I think, big things, you know, they've kind of gotten a handle on, you know, the treatment aspect and the next kind of area that a lot of the consultants and DEP and regulatory agencies are kind of focusing on is now, how do we track it? Where is it coming from? And can we remediate, you know, the point sources of where it is located? Um, and, you know, a lot of it is, uh, kind of still a mystery of how we can do that and how towns can do that. Um, especially the ones that aren't, you know, necessarily, you know, don't have an airfield, don't have, you know, the common, you know, industries that are associated with that, you know, very similar, you know, say we're, you know, Manchester's case, where we don't necessarily have what you'd commonly think of, uh, you know, the PFAS, but it is a lot of, you know, there's a, a lot of towns that are in very much our same position. Um, so that's, you know, where the science is focused on right now is trying to figure out what they can do to remediate in place. Can they make, you know, essentially, uh, you know, barrier walls, more or less, you know, with various, um, you know, uh, how best to describe this, you know, drilling wells and, you know, injecting essentially a, you know, certain material that creates a curtain wall to stop the flow of the PFAS, you know, downstream. Um, so that's still a lot of questions in that area about it. But it, I, you know, it's, a lot of the consultants are now, and other area towns are starting to do that type of investigation to see, you know, tracking it upstream to figure out where it is exactly coming from.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, um, Becky.
Um, just a quick question regarding the, um, you mentioned 128 and road runoff. And we are later going to be discussing Tobacco Road a little bit. Is there any concern with the fact that they're now going to repave the road as it is currently closer to gravelly pond? Is that something that we need to be ahead of? And see if we can readdress that?
Certainly, it's something to think about. I, you know, so I, I don't want to say that, you know, that just having a road is, you know, cause for PFAS, because, you know, obviously, we have Lincoln Street is, you know, is a street right next to the well as well. So, you know, there's the, I don't know that that's the answer either, but, um, you know, it's just potential. And so certainly, you know, I guess where I was thinking more, you know, there's, there's certain, you know, spills or, you know, whatever, the firefighters respond and they, you know, spray their foam or, you know, stuff like that, um, you know, could, you know, always be an issue. Um, so certainly 128 is much more heavily traveled than Tobacco Road currently, or, you know, in the future. Uh, but that's not to say, you know, certainly I will want to see the plans, uh, you know, my general sense is that they're looking to do the best they can with terms of, you know, road runoff going away from the pond. And, you know, I think that'll continue to be something they're striving for. Um, but certainly, it's not as good as, you know, going 300 feet away from the pond or something like that, but, um, it is what it is.
Okay, um, I don't want to spend a long time, much longer on this. Um, we have other items to deal with today, but, uh, Christina.
I just, um, one quick question, maybe two. Uh, is this report that you keep mentioning, is it posted on the website somewhere?
Uh, we haven't done that yet.
Okay, and then my second question is, um, I know it's actually the Brook Street turf is, but have you seen any correlation between the turf or anything used at like maybe the golf course that could be contributing to this? Have you seen any studies for that kind of thing? So I was just wondering if we are talking about high school turf is, maybe that's something that we should be looking at to make sure that's not contaminating the well? See, and it's right there. That was it. Thanks.
Yep. Uh, so, um, in terms of the turf fields, I, I actually did bring that up, and we've, it's potential, but it hasn't been studied yet. So I don't, I don't know for sure, but I, I definitely think it's a potential highlight, high likelihood that it has, um, you know, PFAS in the manufacturing of the turf. I have, uh, talked to the Essex County Club, uh, and they, um, it, it seems unlikely that, um, you know, their fertilizers and stuff would be contaminating the aquifer. They, you know, they have a very regimented, uh, approach to, you know, how they handle the, uh, fertilizers and so on and so forth. So it seems like most of the, from what I can tell, most of their fertilizer is taken up by the leafy material of the grass and, and turf and not going into the soil. Uh, they, you know, they have it kind of, they literally have it down to a science. So, um, I, I'm less concerned about the club at this point, but, you know, certainly um, another big user, their land area.
As, as we're doing the, the field projects, um, we are talking to our consultant about that, about turf. Um, he said it's pretty unlikely that the turfs do contain, um, any PFAS, just based on the data manufacturer. Um, it's not actually in the actual turf material. It would be in the, uh, release agent that they use on the molds to create the turf. And that was phased out prior to, um, you know, the age of our turfs, essentially, is what he told us.
Thank you, Nate. Okay, Mary Foley.
Thank you. Thanks, Chuck and Nate. This is all good information. Um, I wanted to voice my concern. There, I, I know you're averaging now the results from two labs. There was one lab that came back at, at 20.07. I always like to bring things down to what I would do in my home. So the idea that, you know, toxic water is coming out of my kitchen, but my bathroom water is okay. If I combine the two, then, then we're all good. Um, that would greatly concern me. And to Becky's point, kind of when do we let people know, you know, if a, a pregnant mother, et cetera, that we do have levels above? And people should start taking some precautions with filtered water and things like that. You know, because another lab comes in lower, doesn't mean the other lab came in, you know, it doesn't negate the other lab came in higher. So, again, what I would do in my own home, I would hope we would do for the town. Thank you.
Yep. And so, you know, I, I do think about that, and one thing I will say is, you know, the MCL is not based on one sample coming back at 20. We average, uh, quarterly samples as, as well. So by the token of us taking another lab, that's just a QAQC, the original lab. But the, um, the, the results, then, uh, you know, for us to go over the threshold, uh, you know, and to be required to add treatment, we would need much more than just one test. So I, I do take that uh, point, and, you know, I don't want to act like I'm trying to, you know, test for any sort, sort of outcome. I'm just saying that, you know, there, there is a process by which we're following. Um, and it was sheerly just to check that lab. Um, and, you know, I, I don't think that either one is right or wrong necessarily. I just think that it's good practice to have more than one result that you're basing this on, and that's where we are right now. And that's what I would do in my home.
Thank you. And could I just point out, there was, there was an article in the Gloucester Daily Times this morning about, um, PFAS. And some towns are starting to look at requiring private wells to monitor for this, if, if a property switches hands before it, you know, is sold, that the private well has to be tested. So perhaps that's something Manchester should look at as well.
Yep. So I, I, I have discussed these results and, you know, kind of kept, uh, the Board of Health and, uh, you know, updated them on what we have to do. Um, they are the ones that, you know, handle private wells, so, um, definitely something that could be considered.
Okay, um, I, I have a question for Greg, which is, we've made reference to the cost of this project, which is substantial, and also reference to the possibility that, that there may be state funding coming. What do we know about state funding at this point? And, uh, grants that might help offset this very substantial cost to the town?
Do you want me to answer that, Greg, or do you have it?
Yeah, go ahead, Chuck.
Yeah, so, I mean, uh, right now at the state level, the PFAS, uh, funding, uh, is going through the State Revolving Fund. Uh, so the, the, the Massachusetts, uh, State Revolving Trust. And so, um, it's, it's one of those hard things where PFAS is definitely earmarked for, uh, grant funds from the state and, you know, low interest loans. Uh, however, we are not officially over in violation of the MCL. And so the money is basically prioritized for people that are over the MCL. Um, so we would likely be able to apply, or we, we definitely can apply, uh, if we go forward with, you know, more treatment, or, you know, if we get over the MCL. Um, but it's unclear right now how much of that would be grant versus low interest loans, and because we are actually under the threshold, you know, we might not get prioritized at all in the short term.
True. But I just wanted to know whether there was funding potentially available. Are we looking at, oh, yeah, we should get to that in terms of the legislative agenda and, and, uh, funding sources?
Yeah, no, it, they're, they are making money available. However, you know, the, when they put this MCL in place, there was no funding, uh, at that time. And so there, it's, you know, everybody's kind of in the same boat, where if you're over the MCL, you know, you're, you're really up against it because you're adding this treatment at your cost, and, you know, so they're prioritizing those people first.
Okay. Okay, and, um, just in terms of private well testing and PFAS, this is anecdotal, I understand, but I, I wanted to raise it. Um, the elementary school, it's about a third of a mile from where my daughter bought a house in New Salem, out in the west of Massachusetts, has PFAS levels in the 30s. And, um, the town of New Salem is addressing that issue. Um, this was before she bought her house, I went and had her well, because she's on a private well, tested. And, um, there was no trace of PFAS in her well. And it's a third of a mile away. So these, these flows and aquifers, um, are really tough to pin down in terms of going to source contamin, contamination sources and mitigating at the source. Um, particularly as Nate said, when there's no significant military presence or airfields or, you know, fire foam, uh, being used, um, in that area. These chemicals are popping up, and they need to be addressed, but where they pop up, But where they pop up may be at the well or not. So just, just as a comment, particularly around private wells and testing at the time of sale, that's a tough one because as, as Chuckwell knows and the town now knows, you got to test multiple times to determine where you are. So this is a really challenging problem and we're going to need to continue to stay on top of it. We appreciate all the work that Chuck and Nate, um, have done on this so far. And, um, and we need to continue to monitor it when we get if we should get results that start to go over consistently. The need for mitigation will need to be addressed. With a good plan, and I think we've started to get that plan. So I appreciate the work that's been done on this. Okay, um, if there are no other questions. Um, this was primarily just reviewing the status of PFAS at Lincoln Street. I appreciate the fact that you you've used two sources to test because testing can be when you, when you're talking parts per trillion. That's a, that's a miniscule amount of stuff. Um, and testing can be really challenging. Sensitivity of the test can be really challenging. All right, Chuck, if you can hang out with us for a little bit here, um, our next item is a sewer commission discussion.
I'm on the clock with the nine AM start, so.
Okay. Greg, do you want to, uh, start us off on this, please?
Sure. So, um, overall, uh, sort of lay of the land, our, our sewer plant is, uh, is is rated for six hundred and twenty thousand gallons a day, uh, of of processing. Uh, we
Six seventy Greg, six hundred and seventy.
I'm sorry, six seventy. Yep, no, thank you. Thank you. Uh, so six seventy. I I've been using six twenty. I'm in error. And we typically process, uh, it on an average day in the four twenty to four fifty range. Am I right on that number, Chuck?
It definitely fluctuates, but, uh, yeah, that that's in the neighborhood.
Right. So obviously it it fluctuates, um, s- seasonally in terms of use, but also based on weather. Um, we still, um, have a fair amount of infiltration and inflow that is groundwater or stormwater runoff. We made really good progress in eliminating, um, a lot of that INI over the last half dozen years. Really was the reason why the town was, um, issued a consent order from DEP to improve uh, our INI situation. Uh, we've, as I say, have made very good progress on that. And, uh, have brought our average daily down to that, you know, four fifty range. And because of that, the state has has lifted, um, the moratorium on new connections. They had given us a s- a small amount of of flow to to add um, over the last few years, but now the, um, the complete moratorium is lifted. The consent order is still in place as they continue to want to have some additional data from us. Uh, we're slated to be monitoring our INI um, this spring and and summer, and I think into the fall. Um, and with those reporting periods and hopefully good results, I think we can expect the consent order to be rescinded, um, probably sometime late fall in that period. Again, Chuck, step in when I'm not speaking correctly.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't even think it'll take to the fall, to be honest. I think, uh, you know, we're, um, you know, we're, we're constantly working on, uh, different things. We, we have meters in place actually right now. Uh, you know, capturing the spring, uh, rain. So, um, you know, barring anything unforeseen, uh, we, what we really need to supply DP with is a five year and INI plan. The original consent order, you know, had us submit an INI plan and we completed it. And so they're kind of last step now, you know, it's kind of moving the goalposts in my opinion, but you know, regardless, basically they're looking for us to, you know, give them the new plan and then they know that we're, you know, going to follow that plan and, um, you know, they'll hold us to that plan. So that's kind of, I think where we're at.
Yep. So we are budgeting every year for continued INI removal. Um, it's basically replacing old sewer lines that have, uh, have bad joints and are susceptible to for groundwater or rainwater to get into the system. Manholes, et cetera, or other sources. And so waterproofing manhole covers, et cetera. Um, allow us to remove this unwanted flow. Bottom line is, we have a couple hundred thousand gallons of of capacity at the plant. Um, our, our comprehensive waste management plan, which was completed a few years ago, um, looked at sewer need townwide and obviously priority is making sure we have enough flow for the, for the current sewer service area. And, um, as part of that management plan, um, a good chunk of that two hundred thousand is 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 earmarked for any infill development in the existing sewer district. Um, but then it identified other areas in town that might be, but that might benefit from extending um, sewer service to those areas. Um, though the report stressed the the advantage of onsite systems where it is possible. Um, so if an area can handle onsite systems, um, bit of a change in thinking in in the state and about water management and that re- replenishing aquifers is best done through water getting back into the ground. And so when you collect all of your water that's been consumed or you processed or used, you know, in in gray water systems in your home, toilets and dishwasher and showers, et cetera. Um, when you collect all that water and clean it up in the treatment, at a treatment plant and then ship it off out into the ocean, um, you're taking it away from from your aquifer. So there, there is, uh, a desire, uh, to to have as much onsite systems as possible in order to allow your aquifers to be recharged and not remove that water. Um, obviously it comes back eventually in the form of rain. But again, if you can recharge directly, um, there is a push to do that. So the, the comprehensive waste management plan did identify s- six different areas in town that you could consider extending sewer service and the tables that were provided in your packet. Give a summary of the, uh, demand that those six areas might uh, place on the system if they were at full buildout. And again, uh, that number was in a hundred and twenty thousand range gallons per day. Um, and that's using title five calculations. Um, title five calculations are based on a hundred and ten gallons per bedroom, um, which tends to be on the high side in terms of what is actually used. So there's a, um, you know, a margin of safety there. But typically, uh, you know, a bedroom is born in the sixty five, seventy five gallon per day range. So there is a, um, a conservative estimation of what a, the new use uses. And it's the actual use that matters in the long run. So when we talk about the four hundred and fifty thousand gallon a day on average, on a yearly basis being processed at the plant, um, that's actual use. That's not title five calculated use. So this is a bit of a, a long-winded way to say we, we do have capacity at the plant. We do have areas in town that that might benefit from it because it's difficult to have onsite systems. We want to be pretty judicious in how we think about any expanded areas for service. Um, and I think a, a good litmus test is, is to see if a proposed area of expansion can handle onsite, um, systems. Um, again, for that desired benefit of having, um, water percolate back into the, into the aquifer um, and and replenishing, uh, water supply. So at this point, uh, the discussion that you need to have is, um, are there areas of town that you feel we should consider extending sewer? Um, and of course, we have, uh, the immediate question of the request that is now before the ZBA as part of the forty B app application that the applicant has has changed their proposal and is requesting, um, a sewer connection. So that is something that came up during your negotiations with them. They, in the original application had indicated they would be having an onsite system during your negotiations. They, they wrote the subject of, of, um, being connected to the sewer system at that time. The connection moratorium had not been lifted since has been. But you still have the, um, ability to to say no, if you feel that that area, um, is better served by onsite system. Or you have other priorities for the sewer flow. Um, ultimately, as part of the forty B process, um, the decision is actually in the hands of the ZBA, um, because as a comprehensive permit, it gives them that authority. Um, but obviously they'll be looking for, for your input. So let me stop there and have you, um, you know, probe a bit with your questions or make your comments.
Okay, let's, uh, let's start off with board comments. Becky.
Um, I, I understand the decision is with the ZBA, but I, I feel very strongly that we have people in town and areas of the town that have been waiting for quite some time for the, um, moratorium and decrees to be lifted. Um, and I would fully support that before, um, further development or or extending it to a development. Thank you.
Thank you. Eila.
Yeah, um, so I was on the steering committee for the, um, comprehensive wastewater management plan that was put together back in two thousand sixteen. And I'll reiterate, uh, some of what Greg said, namely that the theme of the, uh, steering committee was they were pretty much all on board with the notion that we wanted to as much as possible uh, for unsewered areas can, uh, uh, encourage a communal system so that we could recharge the aquifer from the the outflow as opposed to shipping it offshore. That would apply to, you know, any, any developments, uh, where possible in town. Uh, it was particularly applied out in Raymond Street for two reasons. One, for that reason, and two, because the expensive running sewer out to that region was very expensive, really, really expensive. So uh, as far as the, um, tables that we've got for areas for modest in- increases in sewerage in town, uh, that was, uh, pretty carefully thought out and analyzed when the comprehensive, um, wastewater management plan was put together. And I don't see, uh, any real, um, uh, impetus for, for shifting our, our positions there. As far as the limited commercial district was concerned, the anticipation there was that there would be a possible extension of sewerage out there, but that was to supply areas that where it was infeasible to put um, uh, onsite treatment plants. So out in the rocky areas where, um, uh, the MAC is and and where there's just mostly ledge where things have been quarried out. And it would be difficult, you know, or impossible to put, um, onsite systems. That's, that's what we're thinking about and discussing when we talked about the limited commercial district and the comprehensive wastewater management plant. So again, the policy at the time was to encourage where possible onsite communal systems. And as far as the, um, uh, request from the forty B developer was concerned, they originally came before the town with a request for, um, um, a development where they proposed an onsite, uh, system and it was feasible to do an onsite system. And, uh, during the lip negotiations, that was what we wanted to hold them to for these very reasons. Namely, they, they, they came to us with that proposal and we wanted as much as possible large new developments, um, where possible, if it was feasible to use the output to recharge the aquifers. So I don't see that position, um, in my view, I don't, my position on that hasn't really changed. And I think that that's the position that we ought to take.
Thank you, Eila.
One area and perhaps an area that concerns me i- is um, those private septic systems that are in the zone three of of our watersheds. I, I understand the desire to recharge the aquifer. What I am concerned about is that there will, there are other people like me who don't pay a lot of attention to their private septic systems. And I think we are somewhat at risk for failures of, of a single house septic system, uh, in, in the, uh, zone three of 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 our wa- of our resource areas. Whether the solution there is to coerce people into building a neighborhood system which does recharge, um, or extending a sewer line out, say, uh, loading place road, uh, and Mill Street. I, I have no idea and hope that we get good advice. I am sure that we will get good advice from our DPO. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Yes, uh, thank you, Jeff. A couple of questions. How many homes are on our sewer system now? And I don't, I assume that somebody's got that number. Perhaps. Chuck? Is he still there?
Yeah, no, I'm here. Um, yeah, sorry, I was muted, but I was just doing the math. So I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it's roughly seventy, seventy-five percent of the town houses are on the, um, on the sewage system. So that's, you know, roughly two thousand-ish, you know, give or take. That's just quick math, not an exact number, but.
Trying to mute it.
I'm sorry. I assume that the LCD area, this will be a topic that we'll come up with that. And I understand that the geography there is difficult. Uh, to to work with, uh, work with a communal type of, uh, system. What is the calculation in terms of usage up there as compared with residential? I mean, we've got residential numbers here, but commercial is very different. It depends whether you're manufacturing and obviously an office doesn't use very much, but a other types of facilities do. Is there some sort of assumption that's applied to that?
So yeah, there's definitely, you know, different industry standards for different types of, um, you know, uh, uses. I I would say the, I don't, I don't have an exact number for any specific industry or not, the number that's kind of been floated uh, for, you know, I'll say lab space development would be roughly ten to twenty thousand gallons a day. That's, that's the number that I was given. Um, I haven't fact-checked it or, you know, had it peer reviewed or anything like that, but you know, that's seems reasonable. Um, you know, it's, uh, nine to five use versus, uh, um, anything else. And, and certainly, uh, you know, they would have their own onsite system for anything that's not, you know, regular you know, bathroom slash kitchen use, you know, uh, so, um, you know, any sort of laboratory work, um, would, would need to have its own sort of system containment. That doesn't get to just come right into the That doesn't get to just come right into the sanitary system.
Right. So when you say ten to twenty thousand, that's per per what? For certain thousand square feet? Yes, per day.
Oh, yeah. So yeah, assuming. Yeah, that's assuming, you know, whatever. Couple hundred thousand square feet, I guess, whatever.
Okay, I mean, there has to be some sort of assumption in terms of the size of the building or something like that.
Exactly, yep.
So, okay, all right, that's fine. Seventy percent, okay.
John, I'll just jump in for a second. So I think what CST was was thinking in phase one would be around the ten thousand and if they had a phase two, it would push them up to possibly twenty thousand gallons.
Okay. Okay, all right. So I'm just looking at that relative to where we are in terms of capacity and what's involved. I I echo Anne's concerns a little bit with regard to communal systems, septic systems in in zone three. Seventy percent of our houses are on sewer, and I assume the vast majority of those are certainly within the zone three area of the aquifer. So it seems like most of the houses are 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 involved. One thing I have not, I have not studied this whole problem from five, six, seven years ago. Pretty much most people, if they could get on sewer, they would prefer that to septic. Is that the general public's desire? Was there a survey that was as as was there a survey done associated with the two thousand sixteen study that Eli had mentioned?
I don't know that there was a study done at that time, you know, in general, I would say most people would rather do that than maintain their own onsite system, but certainly if if they have to build out a couple thousand feet of sewer main, you know, to get to their property or, you know, their neighborhood, you know, that's kind of out of the question, comes very cost prohibitive very quick.
Yes, no.
But people, people that are close really want it for sure.
Okay, it's not, it's not universal. Some of some people who've just put in new septic systems, for example, have invested a significant amount of money, which is going to serve them well for a long period of time. They go on sewer, they're going to be paying sewer rates. They don't really want that. So it's not, it's not universal.
Okay, but if
John, before you proceed, may put up in the chat that we have fourteen hundred sewer billing accounts. I'm not sure how that translates into seventy percent.
Well, yeah.
If if I can, just for a second, for pay for from the nineteen two thousand sixteen report, there were about seven hundred approximately seven hundred septic systems in that report noted in that report. And twelve hundred and ninety nine approximately in two thousand sixteen parcels served by the sewer sewer system. So parcels means you can still have multiple meters.
Yeah, so it's it's two thirds roughly.
Yeah, it's somewhere in that two thirds to seventy percent area. Okay. All right, thanks. Needed that kind of to fill in some of those blanks for me.
Okay, Eli.
Actually, I just made my comment.
Okay, thank you. I have a question, which is related to all the I and I work that's been done. How much has our sewer capacity? Or let's put that differently, our wastewater treatment plant use decreased as a result of the I and I work that's been done over the five or six years?
Uh, so we do track the, so our permit is based on the twelve month rolling average. So if you go back to, you know, when the consent order was you know, implemented, you know, we had a twelve month rolling average that was, you know, in the six hundred plus thousand gallons. And now, like Greg said, we're down in the four fifty to five hundred range. So, you know, it's pretty significant to, you know, about about a couple hundred thousand gallons a day, really, yeah.
Okay, and in terms of what's left to do in that work, will we see any further significant increase in capacity at the sewer treatment plant?
So, you know, it depends on obviously on how aggressively we go after it, but there certainly is still I I. You can tell very very much that, you know, when we get to heavy periods of rain, you know, last July, we got over twelve inches of rain. And, you know, our flows went up, you know, corresponding to that. So and then right now, we're, like I said, we're doing metering in the sewer system, the collection system itself, which, you know, when you when you do the math on all that stuff, we definitely still have I I. So it's hard to put an exact number on it because it is, you know, fluctuates with ground groundwater conditions as well as precipitation, but it it seems like there's, you know, still six figures worth of I and I to go after. You know, and the, you know, the low hanging fruit, so to speak, we've gone after and that's, you know, what's gotten us where we are now. It becomes much more costly per gallon to get out, you know, the further you go on that. So that's kind of where we're at right now. So, you know, right now, we've done mainline repairs, we've done manhole repairs. Like Greg was talking about, the the next kind of step, you know, could be or, you know, will be to, you know, go after service lateral connections. So there, you know, the connection of the service lateral to the main line is, you know, where you see I I, but it's more expensive to go after that than the main line. Also, private inflow, which is people some pumps that happen to be connected to the sewer system. Those are much more expensive to get people to move off of. You know, because we don't know that they're really, but then once we do the inspections to get them and then the, you know, investment in, you know, having them removed, you know, that that costs more money than just going after the main line. So that's all I'll say, but.
Is that an approved use, Chuck, to have a sun pump that's tied in?
In fact, it's not approved, it's illicit. You should not do that, but people sometimes don't know the difference.
Okay. So that's on the capacity side. I want to raise a question about the LCD and, excuse me, in particular, the SLV project. They're going to blast through forty feet of ledge to build this property. Jingle Hill itself has a lot of ledge in it. That whole area does on both sides of School Street. Is it even possible to consider the idea that we want you to return with local septic, we want you to return your outflow into the aquifer? And what's the impacts of that, given the amount of ledge? And the proximity to water supply?
Uh, so certainly anything's possible. I I would assume that their leaching field area, you know, parked, you know, there are certain requirements that they'll have to meet to to get that right. And then, you know, the other problem is they have to get it from wherever the wastewater is, so the building to that leach field. So that I I assume they're going to have to go through ledge to get there, but I I honestly don't know. You know, it's certainly possible, and I assume that they've, you know, done their due diligence, you know, when they put in their original plans to know that they could. And, you know, certainly, I would, as an engineer, I would say, you know, anything's possible, just more money and time is all it takes. So
That's what we all love about engineers.
From from perspective, from that perspective, it certainly can happen. But, you know, it, you know, they're it's it's yeah, so yeah, that's it's possible. I assume they've done a certain amount of due diligence to know that they could recharge for their leach field area. I mean, there there is a lot of ledge there, but there's certainly a lot of wetlands there, too. So, you know, that's I'm sure also part of the equation.
Your assumptions about their due diligence are generous. What they did with the Board of Selectmen during the lip process, the negotiations was they kicked the can down the road. And they said, oh, we'll get that information to you when we actually get to the ZBA. And now that they're at the ZBA, they're saying, we'll get that information after you make a decision about what you're going to do next. In terms of whether you're going to allow us into the sewer system or not.
Yeah, so they did a one eighty.
So I don't, I don't know if they've done much of any real solid engineering work to make a determination about the viability of leach field in that area.
Well, it goes back to John's comment about, you know, do people desire to get on the sources? And I would say in this case, you know, you know, it's cost prohibitive either way, but certainly they've made the calculation that now it would be easier to connect. And that is not an easy or cheap process to, you know, run a line down School Street.
Yeah, getting across one twenty eight will be quite a quite a feat. Again, a lot of ledge and going underneath. That's that'll be a huge challenge.
Which they're already considering for the water system. So that's regardless of what happens on the sewer side.
So Greg, you're saying that they would need to go under one twenty eight?
Yeah, Chuck and I were talking a little bit about it yesterday. I don't I don't believe the the overpass is is designed to accommodate any pipes. You just can't, you just can't hang this thing off the side.
Yep.
And whose responsibility is that?
Well, the the bridge itself is owned by DOT and
No, I understand that. I mean, cost wise, who pays to get the hookup from the property to our existing system?
My understanding is definitely the developer, whether it's SLV or CST or any other development that goes on up there, they will bear that cost. It's not in the budget, Greg, Jeff, definitely not.
No, no, I I just wanted to get that out loud in this meeting. Because I think it's really important that we understand that these costs are very high on both ends. Because they were negotiating with us to try and use Mass Save's grants.
Mass works, yeah. Mass works grants, I'm sorry.
This seems like a good time to also interject that, you know, we do still have a a bedroom fee for connecting. So whether it's a, you know, private homeowner that is connecting a new, you know, five bedroom house or somebody doing in addition, if they're connect, you know, adding a bedroom to the sewer system, there's still a sixteen hundred and fifty dollar per bedroom fee that they pay to the sewer enterprise fund. So I would hope that that would be part of the equation for, you know, a two hundred and thirty bedroom, you know, housing complex as well as any other developer that was going to connect. And I also think that you know, having some sort of I I fund, this might not be a conversation for today, but, you know, for connection, I think that sixteen fifty is doing that on the you know, on the individual basis side, but if there's going to be future development in the LCD or other areas that are, you know, kind of nonconforming issues, I would say that, you know, having some sort of I I fund or, you know, paying for those projects that I mentioned, the, you know, to basically offset their capacity in the system by chasing that I I is something we should consider.
Okay. Thank you, Chuck, for all of your knowledge and support with this in terms of us understanding what we're doing.
And Nate.
And Nate. We have a team.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I I didn't mean to leave Nate out. So at this point, does the board have any comments in general about how we allocate the capacity that we have? And Chuck, is there a limit that we want to keep under in terms of the plants rated for six hundred and seventy million gallons per day? And
So the there's no magic. Yeah, there there's no magic number at this point, you know, what triggered the ACO in the first place was we went past the eighty percent threshold without having a CWMP in place. Now we have a CWMP in place. So, you know, we've kind of done that homework, so to speak, on, you know, how fast and where we will add flow. So as long as we keep the I I number in check, and that's where the twelve month rolling average comes in is, you know, that's kind of looking at our past twelve months of flows and seeing what the trend is. You know, like I said, we had a very wet July last year. It could easily go the other way and we have a dry summer and, you know, now that you know, heavy flow comes off the books in that next twelve month rolling average and we see our numbers trending down. So I would say, and you know, whether it's CST or SLV or any other development, they're not going to connect to the system tomorrow. So as long as the town, which, you know, as far as I'm concerned, has been here doing a, you know, doing their due diligence on removing the I I and continuing to go after that I I. I don't see any scenario where we, you know, blow by our six hundred and seventy thousand gallons and we're, you know, in disarray, you know, there there'll be much more bigger issues at play if that happens, which, you know, sea level rise and that kind of thing. But so we're we're not there yet, and I don't I don't have a number in my head to say we need to stay ten percent below. But I will say, you know, if we ever decide to not fund our I I projects, that, you know, I could see us, you know, really having to look at that because, you know, this stuff will sneak up on you if you don't keep on top of it.
Okay, back to the board, Eli.
My original comments, which is, I think the comprehensive wastewater management plan that was put together in two thousand sixteen was pretty comprehensive. And I don't see much that's shifted our position. I think we've made the progress that we expected to make with I and I. I think our plan was good, our execution's been good. And I I don't think there's any real reason for us to to deviate from the positions that we took in the comprehensive wastewater management plan. I think we should still encourage where we can communal systems for large developments, and that includes the SLV property where they came to us with a proposal with an intended onsite sewer system. And that's my position.
John?
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. I'm just kind of looking at the the findings from the two thousand sixteen report. There's no prioritization of with regard to the study areas that were looked at. There are about four or five that it was looked looked as that would be, that would be appropriate. Can I assume that this I and I monies, the monies that are are being poured into, no pun intended, the I and I issue? Eventually, those monies could go to other things like building out, building out the system rather than constantly plugging holes. And I I see that our capacity, I I see that probably our usage based upon the I and I problem we've got right now may go down to maybe three hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day. Right now it's four twenty to four fifty. And I think Chuck, you said maybe there's another hundred thousand gallons you might get out of the, you might gain in in plugging the holes. Our capacity is at six seventy and twenty percent below that, which I think you mentioned was a cutoff beyond that the state has issues. That's at about five fifty. It looks like we've got two hundred thousand gallons per day to work with, which is a lot. And, you know, I'm just asking if there is a prioritization that has been done with regard to the various study areas that were in the report from two thousand sixteen, but I I would endorse the report as it stands. And as Eli says, yes, whatever's going on with the LCD and the SLV, however that works out, it seems that we do have capacity for all of that.
Okay, Anne, I'm sorry, John.
Yeah, just is was any prioritization made with regard to those areas? Eli, I guess you were on that study committee or they were just kind of defined as areas of need?
No, there I don't think that there was prioritization.
Okay.
Right, I really think it it's driven by is is there a cluster of failing systems?
So, yes, and over five or six years, that number may shift around.
Right.
A few years since then.
Okay, Anne.
As I look at the study areas, area one and two are quite close to the existing sewer system and therefore would be much less expensive. Areas, which is area area one is West Manchester, Forster Road, Woodcrest, and area two is this point. Area three, four, and five are closely related, all going out, way out Summer Street to Coolidge Point, Hickory Hill, and Raymond Street. Has anything been done to look at the feasibility of a communal system on the Raymond Street area?
So unfortunately, so Board of Health is really in charge of the septic systems. And I will say, you know, responding to Sue Brown in the chat also asked about Board of, Board of Health policies, they, they have been going along all of these areas and investigating their, you know, testing their systems for compliance as well as making, you know, when they property switch hands, doing the Title V, you know, work to, you know, either upgrade them or bring them into compliance. So that, that has all been ongoing. And on top of that, I will say, you know, we, between the stream team and our Salem Sound Coast Watch, we do a lot of sampling in those, you know, Wolf Trap Brook, I think is the name of it. And there's a couple other areas. So, you know, we have been testing for, you know, failures of septic and issues like that. And we, we haven't been seeing them at least lately. So I'm not sure if that answers you. So we haven't looked at communal, but we have been looking at the systems as they exist today. And it seems like they're in compliance. And I know, you know, there are some that are being upgraded on Raymond Street, you know, right now. So.
Right.
Thank you. Fifteen, there were some neighbors on Ray, Raymond Street who were looking into the possibility of a communal system, but it didn't end up going anywhere.
Okay.
Um, I just, you know, John came up with sort of an approximation of looking like there might be two hundred thousand gallons per day available. And, and my question is, I, I think that, that based on also what Chuck had said at one time in terms of I and I and excessive events, I, I kind of am uncomfortable with coming up with an approximation like that for what's available. When we don't have predictable extreme events to take into account. Did that make sense or no?
Well, it, it does make sense. I understand what you're saying. I will say it's, it's based on a twelve month rolling average though. So like those extreme events that happen for, you know, say a month of rain or even, you know, a very intense week of rain or, you know, high tides or things of those nature. You know, are kind of like they're dampened by the fact that we're looking at a twelve month period, not a one month period. So it, I see what you're saying, but on the other hand, we're kind of taking that into account by using the twelve month rolling average. It's just a way of thinking of it.
When we were under the, you know, the, the worst part of the consent decree, when we're on, our, and I, and I was really bad, the issues, the major issues were the fact that we had tidal inflow going into our septic lines. Those are all the lines downtown that were badly corroded. And every day we had, when the tide would go high and we'd have massive saltwater flows going through the set, the wastewater treatment plant. That's the majority of where we made gains over the past several years. And that's the reason why the, the state really came down on us. We, we had rampant inflow problems. So we're in a much better position right now.
Thank you.
I, I think there's also a need to take a look at this in a much longer term of, of, an event horizon of twenty to thirty years out and not just the pressures of SLV and, and cell signaling. And that is, we talk about how expensive it is, and I, I don't doubt that it is to extend the system out into the area of Coolidge Point and Ocean Street and Hickory Hill and, and beyond to Raymond Street. But in particular, on the coastal side of those, we really face a very tough problem as to septic system failure from ocean flooding. Now, there's, there's lots of issues of ocean flooding in, particularly in the Raymond Street area that don't just involve sewage, but sewage is a big one. And the question is that I have is, there's a lot, there's still a lot of infrastructure money floating around from the federal government. And whether we try and, try and capture some of that to do a, a mainline extension out into the unserved areas. And then start to work on betterments from there so that the residents aren't taking the complete hit of paying for the extension of the system. But they're paying for the hits of hooking up. Any thoughts on that, Greg? Or Chuck?
Well, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying and, you know, it's definitely, you know, potential issue. You know, I, I'd have to study it more to, you know, have a really informed opinion, but just off the top of my head, you know, you can nah, I, I don't even want to say it. No, yeah, it's a good point. We should look into it. But it, it is very expensive. I will say that. So we would definitely need some sort of federal government and, or other funding. And, you know, from what I'm seeing, I agree that there's lots of numbers that are thrown out there. Our ability to capture those dollars is, is much harder.
Yes, I understand. But they're not going to get, it's not going to get easier as those resources start to dwindle.
Sure. But if we're, if we're going for, you know, tens of millions of dollars, which I think that would be, you know, roughly in that ballpark. You know, it's probably, at some level, we need to make sure we take care of the plant first. Because there's no sense in extending the system if the plant's underwater. And that's, you know, another ten million or more. So, yeah, it's, it's an ominous situation. I don't, I don't, there's not a good answer.
So I think it makes a lot more, become much more viable, if you will, if it's, if it is part of a plan, for example, if we were to merge with Gloucester in terms of the treatment plant. That, that's a very, very big mountain to climb. And is, is years away and the expense would be very, very high to get all the way to a Gloucester treatment plant. But if that's our best option, you know, in, in the fifty year time horizon, then it's something that, that could be pursued and, and a regional system like that would, would be eligible, would be more competitive for for grants. Yes. You know, not to be too doom and gloom, but the, the homes that have septic systems that are going to get flooded out because of sea level rise, tho, those homes long term are, are in jeopardy. You know, fortunately, most of the homes are, are high up. The, the pockets that are low lying, it's going to be difficult to, to long term maintain those as viable residences.
Yeah.
There's also onsite solutions, you know, that they can do to make their system work when, you know, high, say elevated groundwater conditions due to sea level rise, that kind of thing. So it's onsite is still viable.
But if we're going to connect to Gloucester, we're going to need to go up through Magnolia anyway, right?
Yeah, it makes the run much shorter for the people in Raymond. Their betterment is less, but the rates go up.
Right. Yeah.
Just the the certainly Coolidge Point and and Raymond are outside of the recharge area. So the argument that we, they should have local site, local systems is kind of weak. It, it local systems in terms of putting the water back into the aquifer. I think Hickory Hill is also outside, but I'm not sure.
So how do we, how do we respond to the request from as one sewer commissioners, the request from the ZBA regarding SLVs? Okay.
Are you looking for a motion?
I'm looking for, yeah, trying to draw this, draw the wagons in a little closer here. We've got a lot of different ideas and a lot of different speculations. Now what? The, the SLV situation is right in front of us and forgive me, I don't think that he just bided his time until the consent order was lifted to do this. But we need to address it. And I heard what you said, Eli, about emphasizing the need for onsite.
Well, does anybody else on the board disagree with the position that I took? If not, we can use that position as the position to present to SLV, right?
Any, any, all right, why don't you put that in the form of motion? Yeah.
I will move that the Board of Selectmen reiterate its position that the SLV proposal should stick with an onsite sewer treatment plan as was originally presented to us on the basis that it's the town's position that where large developments can do onsite treatment, they should. And that sewer treatment extensions will go to locations per the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan where, and in particular where it is infeasible to place onsite treatment plans.
Second.
Okay. Any specific discussion of this motion?
Yes, Jeff, I have a question, I guess, and I think it's directly related to this. Does the state have any jurisdiction in terms of changing specifications such as how wastewater might be handled in the event that things wind up in the courts?
So certainly out of appeal to, so once the ZBA makes their decision, this goes to, to, to the state on appeal. They could say, sorry, this project should be hooked up to the sewer system. So they, they could override that.
Okay.
And I would not be surprised if they, if they were to do that.
Would we then have any footing in this particular issue? To take that to court?
Potentially, you know, that, that'd be a consultation with, with our legal counsel at the time to see what, you know, what, what chances of prevailing might be.
And are we on the hook for costs associated with that? I think that the developer indicated he was willing to pay for whatever the buildout is to get there, but.
Right. No, typically, typically the developer is on the hook.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yes, yes. I, I, I would, the state would back that up.
Can the ZBA require a clear, detailed engineering plan for both conditions onsite and hookup? Because he's avoided doing that up till now.
They, they can certainly make the request, whether or not he complies with that be another matter. And then they will have to make a decision based on the information they have.
And that's, and that's all grist for the mill.
Yes, yes.
I, I would be interested, just, I don't know if this is feasible either, but, you know, regardless of the engineering, I would be interested if they could do a cost benefit analysis because it seems like a lot of this is driven by the cost and the feasibility of their, you know, their project. And so I'm just wondering, and then that would be something at least because theoretically they're building whatsoever the most cost benefit to them. I'm just wondering if that would be a requirement and then therefore, you know, they have to rest their, you know, answer on which one is actually the best cost. I don't know.
Right. And what you could do, you know, you could do a high level cost estimation without getting into the nitty gritty fine details of the final design. And I think that, again, is something that the, the ZBA is sitting as they are for the comprehensive permit, that's something they could request.
You're talking about a comparative cost benefit analysis, Chuck?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think what, there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, do it this way and it, it's going to be, you know, makes the project infeasible, but, you know, I, I would be very interested to know what their own numbers are for the connection to the, to the, you know, sewer all the way down School Street versus, you know, their onsite system that, you know, is much more, you know, I guess that might introduce some more, you know, what are the environmental costs? But, you know, anyway, just a thought. It's, it's something at least for, you know, for my own personal, you know, something to react to or, you know, it's really just throwing numbers at a dartboard right now. And I feel like somebody needs to present something. But they don't want to do the engineering involved. At least they could do the cost.
And last point of information, Chuck, where does the sewer system on School Street currently end?
So there's a small force main system at the, basically the intersection of Mill Street, the first three or so houses on Mill Street. I have a force main system that goes up to Hidden Ledge Road. Hidden Ledge, I believe the entire roadway is on, you know, they have a sewer system coming down to School Street. So my, at a, at a minimum, they would have to go to Hidden Ledge Road. I think that, you know, regardless of, you know, you know, what they might want, that we did, we would need them or their consultant to do a capacity analysis of this collection system from there down to probably Pleasant Street, but all of School Street because it basically comes all the way down School Street, crosses the street, you know, crosses Central and goes into the plant. So we would want to know that their twenty thousand or twenty five thousand gallons a day, you know, would be able to, you know, our system, existing system could accommodate it. Otherwise, I think they would either have one of two options. They could extend the force main, you know, as far down as they need to, to where they have that capacity or relay the line in School Street. So, you know, the way the collection system is built out, it's smaller pipes are, you know, further up. So at the extremities. So it's probably a six or an eight inch line up at Hidden Ledge, which is unlikely to be able to accommodate twenty five thousand gallons a day at peak flow. So I would say that, you know, we might need them to upsize the collection system going down School Street even further than, you know, where it starts now. So that's, you know, certainly things that I have on my mind if they do make that connection in the future.
Okay, so our current motion is to reiterate the board's position that has existed since two thousand and sixteen in the Comprehensive Wastewater Treatment Plan for local systems. Correct? That's the motion.
We're far enough out from when I said it that I can't remember it verbatim. But that's not exactly what I said. I said that we should reiterate depending on the, I, I would have to go back to the recording at this point to get it precisely, but basically it was, we take the position that SLV should continue with, an onsite treatment plant was originally proposed for us for the reasons that we want. It's, it's the board's position that large developments where possible should use onsite treatment plants and return water to the, to the water table. And that the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan lays out ground lines, groundwork for where we should and extend sewer systems. where we should and extend sewer systems. And that we generally support extension of sewer systems into regions where it's infeasible to otherwise place onsite systems. I think that's roughly or fairly close to what I said and was seconded.
Is, is Sharon on? That she could read back what Eli said? I mean, I, I agree with you, Eli, but I don't know if we.
Sharon, are you able to respond with what you wrote down? Or are you relying on the tape as well?
Okay, what Eli said the second time was almost exactly what he said the first time. That the BOs reiterate that the SLV continue with on, as proposed onsite sewer to a plant and the, the, let's see, and the BOs recommends we are large development should use onsite return. And the CWMP where feasible should be extended, the, the shoe, yeah, the sewer should be extended for local use where feasible. Where sewer is infeasible. Septive, right, okay.
Okay, so that's our motion. I think we should take it to a vote before we lose track of it. And I'll start with Eli.
Yes.
And.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Becky.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right.
Hey Jeff.
Yes, sir.
We're running fairly late right now.
Yep.
I have another meeting at noon, which I can move, but I've already moved it for the past two days and also have a full-time job. So this, I, I, as a personal request, this meeting can't go to four hours.
It's not going to go to four hours. We'll, we'll start to move a little bit more quickly now. Those, those three discussions were longer than I expected, but I think that yeah, we're, we're way behind, I understand. Okay, so let's move on. Open space and recreation plans.
So you discussed this a few meetings ago, you requested some additional information. And Sue Brown was able to provide that specifically, a side-by-side comparison of the old goals and new goals and objectives. Details on the ADA assessments, that's the bulk of what was in your packet. And also a revised sort of vision introductory statement for, for the plan. In addition, the plan itself is quite voluminous. Over 400 pages long with all, all the appendices. The planning board has, has endorsed it, certainly the, the committee has endorsed it, looking for, for your endorsement. There may be some additional editing and corrections that, that are needed. I'd encourage you to endorse it and we can still make those edits.
And.
I'd just like to observe that the United States Constitution plus the Declaration of Independence occupy 192 pages. Our open space plan is 411 pages. There's an imbalance here. And the next time we take this up, perhaps we could eliminate some of the verbiage. But I'm perfectly willing to endorse it now.
Okay. Any other comments on this? All right, then let's go to a vote. I'll take a motion on the endorsement of the open space and recreation plan.
I will make a motion that we endorse the open space and recreation plan.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Becky.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Eli.
Yes.
Anne.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you, Sue, for providing the updated information and for sitting through all that other discussion for this very quick vote.
Thank you for, thank you for your endorsement.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the CCB Foundation Request for Support Letter for Kban Peer-to-Peer Recovery and Resource Center addressing substance use disorders. I apologize for the lateness of you're getting the actual content of that letter. I sent it out last night. When I realized that I hadn't sent it out previously. So is there any discussion of this? Becky.
I, I just want to say that I, I, I know that both Senator Bruce Tar and, and Margaret Ferrante have been very involved with this and supported. And that the family has done a lot of work to bring this about and it is a greatly needed resource in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Any other comments? Okay, Becky.
Sorry. I, I, I like the, the letter that's written, there are just a few de minimis changes that I think need to be made before it's sent though. But I would be willing to endorse the letter with the changes, the minimis changes.
Do we want to make those changes now or how do you want to handle the, the changes? I can put the letter up on the screen and we can edit it, but I'm very clear on Eli's request that this moving, this moving meeting goes on. This meeting moves on. Is the board ready to vote on the letter with Becky's minor changes? Or do you want to hear what they are first?
Sure, I'd like to hear what they are.
Okay. Hang on. Okay. There's the content. Is it readable?
Yep. Um, I, and, and my apologies, I didn't get home from a meeting until late, so I saw this this morning.
You didn't, you wouldn't have gotten it because it didn't go out until after midnight.
There we go. It was. Right, well. Looks differently on here than it did on my phone, so evidently I was misreading something. It was just, you know, a capitalization here and a period there, that's it.
Those are the kind of changes that I think we can go to a vote.
Absolutely.
I would like a parenthetical, parenthetical unanimous, strongly, I think it should just be the Board of Selectmen supports.
Okay. So we have a motion?
So moved.
You need to make the motion, please.
I make a motion to accept the letter of support for CCB Foundation and the development of the Core Peer Recovery and Resource Center in Gloucester to serve the communities of Kban.
If, if I could make a friendly amendment to that, that the motion is to support their grant application, not the foundation itself.
Accepted.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Eli?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. All right, let's get out of here. And I will send that final copy into the office after this meeting. Our next item on the agenda is the US Policies.
If I may, Jeff.
Yes, ma'am.
The two areas. Um, the flag policy and, and the appointments policy. I anticipate some kind, some discussion and in the interest of time, I suggest we postpone this to our next meeting. And I would be delighted to receive any thoughts that board members have on those policies between now and then, and will endeavor to incorporate them.
I would support that. I think this is going to be, this, these two items are going to take an extended conversation.
Okay. Any objection to that by any other board members? You can say yes or no. Okay, I got two, I got two head shakes, I'm good. All right, so we're going to pass over these policies and if you have comments to Anne, go ahead. And we will review the policies with those comments at our next meeting on May 2nd.
Yes.
Okay. Consent agenda. In the consent agenda, we have a seasonal liquor license. And there was a concern that was raised to me about whether the correct name of the manager was on this particular license.
Jeff, may I speak to that? I've got some information.
Okay, go ahead, Becky. Go ahead, let's, let's go through the rest of the consent agenda. Because we'll have to pull out the license to speak to it. The arbit date proclamation, which is very well written, since it's the same one we do every year, but it has the wrong date on it. It needs to be for April 29th, I think. 2022. Comcast, the announcement of this new government affairs liaison. And the minutes for the 21st and the 4th.
I would like to hold the minutes from the 4th for a variety of reasons.
Okay. So we're holding out the minutes from the 4th and the seasonal liquor license. The rest of the consent agenda, can I get a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, moved by Becky, seconded by John. In favor, John?
Yes.
Eli?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Let's take up the seasonal liquor license and you can speak to that, Becky.
Um, I, I've spoken with both the president of the Bath and Tennis as well as the current manager. And it seems that they have been trying since February to get the three documents they need approved. And what they need is the liquor license, the retail license, and the change of manager form. They have tried repeatedly, apparently, to ensure that the proper names as well as the correct boxes are ticked and not the wrong ones. So they're, they've, they've had quite a few issues with this, which include many, many trips to Town Hall. I think because this, the error in the name of the manager on this particular document that's been submitted is not their error. I feel that they need to be given these licenses to function. And they've done everything they're supposed to do. It is on our end that the errors have occurred. I think it's onerous that any club should, or, or anybody should have to come down in excess of a dozen times for three pieces of paper.
Becky, do you know whether?
I would like to address that if possible, since I've been the one dealing with the woman coming down.
Just, just a minute, Sharon.
Okay.
Becky, to your knowledge, is this name that's on the applications before us the correct name?
No.
Okay.
The correct name is Kimberly Berg and she is on the call right now.
Okay.
I know we've had a lot going on. I know there have been a lot of changes. Not okay.
No.
So.
When Ms. Bird first came in, I had never done the seasonal license before, so that came second. The first thing came, the change of manager. And what happens is everything has to be inputted into the ABCC computer. And then, once they get back to me, which takes a few weeks for that to happen, it's just not overnight. Then they will send me their approval. So before, this only got approved, I received notice from them yesterday. So the old name still had to go on because Ms. Bird was not yet the manager approved by the ABC. So I can now change the license to her name. And I will do that this morning and then have you all come in to sign it and she will be all. And then have you all come in to sign it and she will be all set. I have to go by the timing of the ABCC. And it takes them weeks to do things. So that is where that stands and I believe she came in three times. And each time I tried to be as helpful as humanly possible to her.
I I do not want to get into. A he said, she said, or back and forth. And I just want to go through Jeff on this since Jeff is the chair. And and I just, Jeff, if I may.
Go ahead.
I I just. Think this, this, I know that other clubs in town have since received their licenses. And.
You're frozen, Becky.
And there's always a learning curve. I get that. But when other clubs have received all their information quite some time ago. I I just think that we need to rectify this now. Thank Jeff.
Okay. Anne?
I would just like. To, since Ms. Bird is on the line, um, take the opportunity to say that I have had complaints from neighbors. In previous years about their tennis pro using very loud and unpleasant. Corrections to his students and that I hope that this year we will not see a repetition of that. That's all.
How is that relevant to the liquor license?
If they were a public nuisance, I would argue that they shouldn't get a liquor license.
Okay. And do we have a formal complaint that they've been a public nuisance?
In the past, we have.
In the past year?
Know if it was last year.
Okay. Okay, so Kimberly, in your role as the new manager. The issues that Anne Harrison is raising and have been brought to the attention of. The town administrator. Regarding. The tennis pro need to be addressed. Because it could jeopardize. The license even midseason.
Of course, I do apologize like that. This is my, I just came on to staff in January. So I'm not aware of any past issues. Nothing had been brought to my attention before. Going forward, I will definitely bring this up with the board that I wasn't aware that we had any. Nuisance complaints beforehand, or if there was a problem with our with our tennis pro, I will definitely look into it and reach out to them. And get a full story. On that and I will make sure that we do not have any issues in the in the future. I tend to run a very, you know, comm club. There should never be any yelling or profanities or anything being spoken by anybody, you know, especially in a residential neighborhood. So I really hope that, you know, we will not have any issues in the future.
So do we. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving on the particular license renewal that's in front of us. With a change of the manager's name from Holanda. Berube to Kimberly Bird. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Becky, seconded by Eli.
By Anne Harrison.
I'm sorry, Anne.
We look a lot alike.
No, the voice, when I'm looking down, the voices sounded similar to me. I apologize. I I need to keep my eyes up and follow lips. Anne, would you like to start the vote?
Yes, and I vote yes.
Okay. Yes and yes. Thank you. John?
Yes.
Eli?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you, Kimberly, and thank you for taking. The time to address the issues that have been raised related to noise.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Tier report.
All right, I'll run through this fairly quickly given the time. You have a memo from the Park and Rec. Committee, they have an interest in revisiting how the Brook Street turf field is is managed and under. Under whose authority it lies. Currently, it is with the school district. And they would like to initiate a discussion about potential change to that. So it's not an issue that we decide right now. I just want to highlight that and and. Get any perhaps initial thoughts on how we might take the next steps. Logical next step would seem to be to have a discussion. With members of the of the school district, Park and Rec and maybe one or two of you and. And and see where that leads us.
You'd also put in your memo, taking this up first with the district collaborative group.
Right, yes, I think that's probably the good first place to start.
Okay, so is the district aware of Park and Rec's concerns and. Initial proposal to take over maintenance of the field?
Yeah, I'll have to double check with with them. I don't know if it's come to us first and then. And then I suspect it has not gone to the school district yet.
Okay. So how fast do we need to move on this? Because there's a lot of questions.
Yeah, I know. I don't think this is something that gets resolved in the next month or so. I think if we can try to get it resolved by the fall. In in preparation for the 24 fiscal year. That would be, that would be a good goal.
Okay. And is the field safe enough to use in the interim?
Um, yes, according to that report. It it does pass standards for use. There are a couple of areas. That they the report recommended some interim fixing. As I think there are a couple of areas that were either at or slightly above. The the thresholds for safety.
Yep. Okay. This could have a very significant impact on our budget. Because that field is scheduled for replacement, not just maintenance, but replacement.
Correct.
And who would be responsible for the replacement of the field? Are we proposing here that we take over maintenance and replacement?
We always have split the cost of the replacement on that field.
Right. So it's been a cost, so it's been a cost share. I I think the Parker Rec is proposing that that cost share remain in place. More of who who is overseeing it and who's managing. So again, I don't think we should take time right now to sort of get into those weeds.
Got it.
Okay, certainly discussion that needs to happen in the future.
Okay, so the next step. That you're suggesting is that we take this to the collaboration. Group. Which, just to be clear with other members of the board and the public, is the chairs of the FinCom. Selectment. Town administrators. And school committee. Along with school representatives, the superintendent, Javi Urbis. Which meets periodically about budget issues.
Exactly.
Okay.
All right, item two, Chewbacca Road. So Hamilton, as you know, had requested permission. Our last town meeting, I'm sorry, in this.
A special time meeting in the fall.
Special time meeting. Thank you. I was trying to get there. Anyway. Did not get the two thirds requirement. It was approved by majority of folks, but not the two thirds. They've regrouped and feel like their best, quickest path forward is to is to pave the existing road. And it would get. Reengineered as part of that paving, regraded, I should say, so that the drainage would. Would slope away from gravelly pond and go through soils and and some. Shorn water. You know. Calling it a management system, maybe overstating it a bit, but there would certainly be over overland flow before goes into into gravelly pond. So. They are not adverse to to us taking another stab at granting permission. But. So if we could do that at this, as the special town meeting in June, maybe you don't need to make a final decision on this right now. Something to think about. And if if the voters were to approve it in June, there's not a guarantee that Hamilton would. Would agree to the relocation, but it is something that that they're willing to consider.
Anne?
I strongly support our presenting this again and making an effort. To explain to the voters why we are asking them to make a third approach of this. And that we'd be very careful to make sure that all of the. T's are crossed and I's are dotted this time. Thank you.
Eli?
Yeah, this is pretty predictable. One question and then a comment. The question is for repaving or paving the existing roadway. Have they gone before their concom? Do they need to go before their concom? They don't go before our concom. And if they receive permissions to do so.
They they need to, and I might say as they have not done that yet, they're gearing up to do that very soon.
Okay. As far as crossing the Ts and dotting the Is, I note that their position is that they won't initiate the permitting process at this time. And until we give our approval, in other words, our approval of town meeting would have to be conditional. In other words, they. They're not interested in jumping through. A bunch of. State permitting process if they're going to get kicked in the knees by Manchester again, correct?
Correct, so you're exactly right. So if if Manchester were to prove it, it would. It would be prior to permitting it, but it could be conditioned on them getting. Approval through the. For getting all the appropriate permits before proceeding.
I don't object to putting it before Manchester voters. Again, I think it would be, my position was going to be better for us overall anyway. I made the argument that. Ultimately, economics would tilt towards them paving this where it is. Sounds like the economics are already there. So better for the town if they move the roads, I would support us putting it back.
They're still putting together the packets.
Could you mute yourself, please?
Sorry.
That's all I got to say right now.
Thank you, Eli. John?
Yeah, I'm I've I I'm I'm involved with the Water Resource Task Force, as you know, and I don't think. That this has not been a topic of discussion in any of the meetings that we've had. But water resource issues are obviously a factor in the whole decision process here. And the Water Resource Task Force, I think, has a meeting next week and I want to make sure that this is on the agenda so that the folks. Associate with that know and we've divided up into various committees and there is one committee that probably. Is involved with this a bit, including the committee that I'm on. So I I think that. We need to get some input from from that group perhaps sooner rather than later.
What's the deadline to get this onto the the special time meeting warrant?
You you need to finalize that warrant. I believe it's May 24. Right, right around that.
Says about two weeks.
About two weeks ahead of time, so. You you have two more meetings to finalize that warrant.
Okay.
And and just lastly, then. We have the end of time meeting Monday, April 25. I'm sorry.
Jeff, I'm sorry to to interrupt. Sue Brown has put an invitation to a meeting on the chat. I don't know how to preserve the chat after the after the meeting and I'd like to ask her if she could email that invitation to us.
Yes, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you.
And that's tonight.
Yes. It's a planning board meeting and they will be discussing this topic.
Okay.
And not specifically the topic of whether the our town would approve it, but the paving of that road.
Got it. Okay, I'm sorry, Greg. Go ahead. End of time meeting.
Yeah, end of time meeting coming up on Monday, seven o'clock at the elementary school and everything is in place. The final round of deliveries are happening today for the inner report and the finance committee report. So that should be in people's hands by this evening. Half the town or maybe two thirds of town received them last yesterday. The school committee report is being mailed separately and that should be in people's mailboxes by tomorrow. And encourage everyone to to come out. We do have childcare available. It can be. People can register through Park and Rec if they would like to have their children be watched at the school while while they're in the meeting. And we have a 13 articles. Most of them are budget related. And and most of the budgets are. And we've gone over them. There, a lot of them is, most of them are service, level services are some proposed increases in. Public safety, fire and police in particular, some additional small additional hours of harbor master and. Some additional hours for the concom, but for the most part, all departments are pretty much status quo. There are the three special articles, if you will, not related to not related to budget, and that is the. Proposed zoning amendment for the LCD that will require a two thirds vote. As it is a zoning change. There's also the article to. Adopt a three percent room tax on short term rentals, so that is new. And the third one is to officially change the name of the selectmen to the select board. So again, encourage everyone to attend and encourage your friends and neighbors to attend and hopefully we'll have a successful meeting.
Board speakers.
So the movers of the articles. Should be the ones who be should be prepared to for to speak first. On on a particular article. We do have a briefing with that Alan Wilson posts. He'll be doing that Saturday morning at nine via Zoom. And he he does a run through. Just to make sure everyone is teed up. just to make sure everyone is teed up.
Okay. Becky?
I just have a quick question for Greg. And Greg, you said that if we finalize the warrant for the special town meeting, if that has to be finalized by May 4th, you said we have.
May 24th.
24th.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Didn't get my hearing aids in earlier.
We'll sign it too. Okay. Any any other questions, comments that have not been discussed or were not on the agenda? I'll take a motion from Mr. Bowling to resort to.
Adjourn, motion to adjourn?
Adjourn. I was gonna say resign.
Yeah.
Resignation.
I expect your letter on my desk in the morning. Go ahead, Eli, for the motion.
Already done, and it was seconded by Becky.
Okay. Roll call vote. Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Round?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes, please.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
And thank you for getting that assumed like to us.
Yes, thank you.